Over a period of time we were not aware of, but that our police have uncovered this last weekend. That's going to be going on for quite some time. If there are any questions, you can direct them to Mike Roberts at the Police Department. None of us are really in a position to talk about any of the information about the case that's ongoing. Congratulations Ben on making it through your convention. All right, we have an agenda in front of us. Are there any changes or comments on the agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
May the motion be approved to make its agenda?
Motion by Sid.
I'll second.
Seconded by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have our consent agenda items. Any questions or discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
May the motion be approved to make consent agenda items?
Motion by Sid.
I'll second.
Seconded by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? All right, we'll open it up for open session now. If you have an item that you'd like to discuss with the council, but it's not on our agenda, or is not an open hearing, a public hearing on the agenda, you're invited to come at this time and state your name and address and address the council. Councilmember Boyd has arrived.
I will not correct that. Has arrived.
Hello, I'm Mark Washburn, 243 East 300 North in Pleasant Grove. This is kind of in response for their last council meeting, the comments that I made. I feel maybe I need to clarify some of those to a degree. I do feel that we do need a police and a fire station and a court system. We also need new roads, we need new water lines, and all those things that are necessity for the city. And I think we need to work together as a city to accomplish this. We can't accomplish something by going one way and one over here and one over here and here. We've got to work together as a community. I'm glad that we have brought in outside firm to do some consulting work to help, work to bring forth that. And some of the people I've talked to, I talked to one of the firefighters' colleagues, and he got quite upset with me, and then I sat down and talked to him. And we sat down and we agreed that what was going on last fall was brought about and was brought forward here on the way. That we as a city need to work together with everybody. The police station, the fire station, the city hall, and the court system isn't just for the city council, for the firefighter and everybody. It's for everybody in this city. And that's what we've got to do is work together. We don't need to build something that's a Taj Mahal that other cities have brought forth and done. I have a firefighter through the block from me. He says it's ridiculous what the cities have done in building Taj Mahals within their cities. Let's build something that the city can afford and is reasonable in order to accomplish that. I'm glad that we live in America, the land of the free, where we all have a choice, we all have a voice. And that's where it needs to be. There's an old saying, it's called team. Together, everybody achieves more. Working together. And I hope that we can accomplish that in this city and bring the city together, not fighting factions against each other like we've had in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council as part of the open session? We should make the students required to get up in speed. It's part of our government, but we're in class. All right, we'll close the open session at this time and move on to the other matters of business. Reed Price?
Yeah, Reed got ahold of me earlier today. He's not able to make it tonight.
Okay.
We don't have a date yet, but we'll push it to another day.
Okay, so we'll just move that one forward. Okay, item B. We have a public hearing to consider for adoption ordinance 2014-13 at the request of Rob Taylor to amend City Code Section 101527-1C-2 to allow used car sales located in an area between State Street and Center Street on the west side of North County Boulevard in the commercial sales zone, Grove Commercial Sales Zone.
Okay, this item has come before in a discussion to city council to give some direction for the applicant to look at. There was a previous, our proposal that came forward to add some text, a text amendment to our code that would give greater definition to what new car sales is. And it was determined at that time that perhaps it was a little bit broad stretching and perhaps was not the best way to meet the applicant's objective. So what we did is we went back as staff and met with the applicant's representative and looked at how we could accomplish this in another way. I think we did mention at the discussion with city council that perhaps we look at zoning or whatever, if there was other options there. We were concerned when we looked at the zoning, rezoning of the properties. And let me point out that where we're talking about the area we're talking about is west of North County Boulevard, adjacent to the American Fork City boundary. And so State Street would be up here, and the alignment, future alignment for the extension of Center Street would be at the bottom of this property down to here. So the applicant is looking at purchasing this property, which is a narrow strip of property. There's actually two narrow strips right in through here. He's looking at the one that fronts right onto North County Boulevard and would like to move his business, which is located elsewhere in Pleasant Grove, that does very healthy business in Pleasant Grove. He'd like to expand upon that and build in this location. However, this location is in the Grove Commercial Sales Zone, which does not permit used car sales. His business deals with both new and used. And so he had a bit of a quandary there because this seemed to be the best location he could find for his business in Pleasant Grove. He was looking at other opportunities as well. He would like to stay in Pleasant Grove, so what we did was worked with him on his application to amend the code to do something differently and just call out a specific area, which is outlined in red here, that wherein used car sales could be permitted within the commercial sales sub-district of the Grove Zone. So in no other location in the Grove Zone would used car sales be permitted. So that seems to be a good option of how to move forward to meet the applicant's objective. And the applicant feels comfortable with that. And so we had taken this proposal forward to the planning commission just this last week, and they did recommend unanimously that this proposal be approved. And so as you see in the staff report and the attached proposed ordinance, that it just adds some verbiage in the permitted uses section of that zone stating that motor vehicles, automobiles, used only in parentheses, permitted only within the area west of North County Boulevard between State Street and Center Street, as shown on map one below. And this would be map one that would be attached. So that is the proposal, that the code be amended as such.
Many questions for Ken?
No questions. So Ken, you're talking about he wants this section right here. He just owns that. What about the other area he owns that?
Well, what we did is we looked at the area between State Street and the next available street that we could have a boundary on, which would be the extension of Center Street, which has not yet been developed but will be. And that will lead into American Fork at that location as well. But this is the only area on the west side of North County Boulevard in that location, between State Street and Center Street. Those are the only, there's a very narrow strip of property up and through here, which is not buildable. That is in Pleasant Grove boundaries. But it's just these properties. So there are a few properties in here. So there's one, two right here, and there's about two, three, four total in that entire area that we've designated.
And Rob Taylor owns all of that?
No. He is under contract to purchase this strip right here. So instead of just calling out that one property that he owns, we thought, you know, we're not necessarily wanting to amend code specific to one person's property. We want to amend the code to make sense in the zone or with, in the city however it is applied. And this entire area makes sense because it is all a very narrow portion of Pleasant Grove boundary properties that otherwise cannot be developed with large commercial. Those will only allow smaller commercial operations. So it seemed to make sense, if we're going to allow it on this property, why would we not also allow on these other properties that are also small, limited in their depth and ability to develop?
Just question, so he owns the one that fronts North County Boulevard. Is that going to landlock the, I mean, what are we looking at as a site plan for that whole area? On top of the zoning that we're talking about, what are we talking on site plan? And what can be done there?
There is no site plan per se, other than what he is proposing conceptually right now for his business on his property. The property behind it will have frontage on the new road as it is extended down through here. So there will be access into that property off of that road. The other properties north of there all have access onto North County Boulevard. So there would be no landlocked situation.
So we're not looking at how the, I mean, we try to get site plans as well as we can before, you know?
Well, it's difficult to anticipate to any type of specific development that might come into these properties. So yeah, if you were to be able to master plan and have control over the development of properties, then we could say, no, we should combine those two narrow pieces of property and have some other availability for development. But we don't control those properties. All we do is zone them. So certainly it might be in the best interest of the property owners if they were interested in a large development, or as large as it could be in that area, to combine their properties. But we have no way of forcing that to happen. And we do have a property owner who is wanting to purchase one of those properties to develop as per the code. And so this is the code that's being proposed to be amended.
So what is the, how many acres is it? It just seems like we need to encourage them to doing that, the property owners. But we've often tried to look at what the site plan will offer for the area instead of just one offs.
Well, in particular section such as this, there's really not a whole lot of large master planning that can occur anyway.
Sure. So how many, somebody?
Two point four.
The whole, that whole red area is only two?
Sorry, we're going to recap.
I was going to say.
Sorry, yeah. Two point four three two acres for that narrow strip that fronts along the street.
No, I'm talking about the whole red area.
We haven't calculated that for second.
Just a thought, just a thought on that, and this is what we run into from time to time. Is people will approach us and say, we want to do a development, but they don't want to put a bunch of money into site plans and things like that until they know they can get the zoning. And I think this is where he's at, is he's not ready to do all this because he wants to know he can get the zoning first. If he gets the zoning, then he'll create a site plan and do all that. And that's just something we run into sometimes with developers is they're going to go so far, they're going to spend so much money, but until they know they can get the entitlements from the city, there's a certain point where they're going to stop.
And so there is a reason that used car sales weren't permitted in that area before. Is it because it fronts small Utah County, we didn't want used car sales there? Or do you know what the reason was?
I don't know if there's any stated or stipulated reason on the records why it was created that way. I think if I can guess at the reasoning, it would be that the Grove Zone is our jewel for commercial development and we want the best that we can get down in that area. And so having a lot of used car lots in the Grove Zone probably does not meet that agenda. That would be my guess.
Well, sorry, we're interrupting here. My understanding partially too is as we were recruiting a large company to come to our city, they were concerned about having a used car lot right next to their development. And so we said, okay, as we looked at the zoning, that was something that made sense along the lines of, let's just take used cars out of this total zone. Because we don't know if we want it all the way along Pleasant Grove Boulevard. It was really the focus at the time. We really weren't considering North County Boulevard when we had that discussion. When we changed it for the zone, it changed it along North County Boulevard as well. So as we were, you know, trying to work things out to make sure we get the proper development there, this is one of the kind of unintended consequences of that. So ultimately, I think for us as a city, we just need to determine, are we okay with the used car lot on North County Boulevard? If we are, this is a great way to go. If we're not okay with that, then we need to deny the zone and have them figure out where they want to move their business.
Well, I think as always, I mean, clear back, Mike, may remember, I mean, we've had a discussion about car dealerships, specific to used car dealerships, longer than just someone coming in recently. I mean, the overview, overview goal or vision of the area was not used car dealerships. I would like to know what the definition of used is. Is it used, obviously a used car, but is there a definition to what is that like cars to nineteen?
We do not have a definition in our zone that defines that.
Is that something that we need to have? How do we define?
Well, we had a proposal for how to, how to define new and broaden the scope of that. And I think perhaps there was a use with that. But that was a proposal to add verbiage to our code, which has not been added to our code.
I think it was less than 30,000 miles. Is that right?
Yeah. What happened was last time we came forward here with a proposal to amend our ordinance to add a definition of new car. That definition was very detailed and not clear for anybody except for the person that wrote it because it fit their business model. So that was, that's why we're doing this, is because the council said, let's not do this concludate definition of new to fit one person's business. Let's figure out a different way to do it. So this is a different way.
So how are we defining it then, is my question, I guess? How are we defining this ordinance as to new and used?
Well, it's not currently defined in our code, but typically new means brand new, never been registered or titled. Used is something that's been driven as my own mind.
I just anticipate used as can be really used. I don't know. I just, I'm.
Well, the discussion before was, if you remember, that we felt comfortable with making this change in this area because it is in the Grove Zone and there are higher design guidelines for that zone. So the original concern from council was we don't want a lot of old junky used car lots with those, you know, ugly buildings and whatever. We want high quality looking materials. And so Ken explained last time that in this instance, in that small area, they would be subject to the higher quality design guidelines of the Grove Zone. And so the chances of getting something that wasn't quality were less. If you're, if you're not comfortable with that, that's fine. We'll do something else.
Ken, in a different vein, did you say that the applicant already has some property here?
No. The applicant is under contract to purchase the property that we've discussed that fronts onto the.
The other property owners?
Okay, well, I'm sorry, he has a business further up, but not in this particular location he does not own property.
Relative to the red area, have the other property owners been notified of the intent to change the zone?
It is, well, no, because it's not a zone change per se. It is a code text amendment, which allows specific uses in a certain area. So I guess perhaps we could or should have noticed them. It doesn't take anything away from them. It just adds ability on their property. But it is not a zone change per se, which does require the noticing.
It's also a public hearing. Shall we open it up to let the public speak?
The applicant's representative is here.
Great. You're welcome to come up as well. Anybody else that wants to speak on this item, please come up and state your name and address.
My name is Paul Washburn. My address is 835 North Main Hill West Forum. I am representing the applicant here this evening. In response to, I need a couple of comments maybe to clarify. This is Rob Taylor, Shamrock Sales. He's been in the city for a number of years. My understanding, he's been one of the top sales types for the city as well. His business model is very unique and not found really anywhere else in the state. He buys cars from the factory that have previously been titled. These are generally executive cars, promotional cars. Last year, if you were lucky enough to qualify to enter the Masters Tournament, you were given a brand new Cadillac to drive for a week. Those are the kind of cars that he buys and has. So they are technically a used car. However, the majority of his cars are current model year and with significantly less than 30,000 miles on them. Early on, when we were trying to create a definition, trying to go that route, we looked at his inventory and compared it with other car dealers in the state. We only found one car dealer in the state that had a higher percentage of current model year cars in the inventory, that was Jerry Schleiner and so on like. So it's principally his business model is a new car, but since it has been previously titled, he is technically a used car. The property works out very well for him. I don't know that it works out well for other people. The depth of the property is approximately 100 feet. It gives him lots of frontage to show cars. That's not a good depth even to build 7-Eleven. I mean, it's fairly narrow piece of property. One of the other advantages, and I think it goes to councilmember Boyd's concern about master planning the entire area, used car lot or a new car lot is principally asphalt. There's not a lot of very expensive improvements. And should the, if the ability in the future come, the properties could be amassed or consolidated, it's not going to be an overwhelming, undoable experience for that to happen. Currently, Mr. Taylor has contacted the property owners to the rear and if they're not interested in doing trades or changing property around now. They may be in the future, but again, I think this use may be better than other uses would allow that potential amassing or changing in the future to be better than maybe other uses that could be brought to bear. Mr. Taylor would like to see this, hit the new car lot, both on a personal basis because his business is successful. He would like to see it continue to grow. Also, the suppliers, as he's buying cars from, are saying, we want you to upgrade what you have as well. And so he is under some pressure to do so. He would really like to stay within the city of Pleasant Grove. He's looked at a number of sites. This seems to be the most reasonable site for his business he's been able to find in town. He generates a lot of sales tax. I'm sure the other cities would be glad to see him. Currently, even though he is looking at other sites elsewhere, this is where he would like to be. If there's a way we could convey, I think that's, that would be great for everybody. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the applicant?
I appreciate your comments.
What, is he planning, would he front the entire piece right there with cars? Like what's in the inventory or lot size of cars that he sells?
Can I walk over to the map?
Could you press that button?
Yes, push the button.
Oh, okay. Right now, I think there is a driveway somewhere in this area that has been approved driveway that are into the site. This is a long site, and as you know, North County Boulevard is limited access. At the point of the entrance, he plans on building a small office building. I believe it's about 2,000 square feet. And there would be a garage bay to do detailing of cars. And then the balance of the space would be utilized as a display space, probably a double loaded parking lot, two deep. That'd give him lots of frontage and a lot of exposure. Ultimately, I think, and ultimately being, you know, sometime in the next five to 10 years, as other properties become available and as this property turns into development, I think he would be amenable to try and do a consolidation of that. And again, with the improvements really being three and a half inches of asphalt, it's a doable deal in the future of being able to do so. But currently, this is what he's been able to acquire and that's what he's going to try and work with. I believe that access point is down a couple of hundred feet from that boundary. And he would probably locate on the southernmost portion of that and leave this property available for either further consolidation or a competitive development.
Any questions for the applicant?
Can I ask Pete, this development and the change that's taken place in this area?
I don't know if he has gone door to door with all of the neighbors, but I know that at least the neighbors to the rear he has spoken with because he was trying to see if there's a way to amass that property. And at this point, there's no interest in doing so. The neighbors in the Maravista Development to the rear of that, I don't know that they have been contacted. I know that the, trying to think, I guess the administrator of this development here is aware of that, but I don't know whether they've contacted.
I know that Mr. Smith, who owns the property to the east across the street, is aware.
But what about the ones north?
One, Mr. Beasley, who is directly north, the first property to the north. Was it second? Okay. Was at our planning commission meeting for another item, so he is ordered as well.
Okay, it's a public hearing. If anyone else would like to comment on this item, just come forward and state your name and address. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back up here for further discussion. Any other discussion?
I'll just make the comment. I appreciate the efforts to do this through ordinance zoning, new use, rather than through a definitional change. That was the discussion that I thought made a lot of sense. My only hesitation, of course, is that while I value what Shamrock does, I worry about some future car sales lot that's predominantly used. But I take some comfort in the fact that the planning commission unanimously supported this and the higher development standards in that section. So I'm okay with this proposal. I think it makes sense. And I think it is a tremendous effort to protect and provide support for a business that we really do value in Pleasant Grove. Those are my thoughts.
You want to turn that into a motion?
I'll turn it into a motion if there's another schedule.
Before you do, I'm going to clarify one thing. So do you know when you said that, or Ken? So they meet the same design review as the rest of the Grove, as they go forward and build their building and landscaping, their setbacks. Everything else will meet the criteria of the Grove.
And that's one of the reasons why we thought of this solution rather than creating a new zone or finding over there. We wanted to make sure they were still accepted to the higher zone.
Okay, okay.
Okay, my hair. I move, I move that we adopt ordinance 2014-13 at the request of Rob Taylor to amend City Code Section 10-14-27-1C-2 to allow used car sales located in an area between State Street and Center Street on the west side of North County Boulevard in the Grove Commercial Sales Zone.
Motion by Ben, seconded by Diana, by voice, Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item C is a public hearing to consider for adoption in ordinance 2014-14, rezoning approximately .9 acres from R120 to R115 on property located at approximately 525 East 1100 North in the Big Springs neighborhood.
Okay, the applicant's property, as shown here on the zoning map, is triangular in shape and is close to the intersection of 500 East and 1100 North. Currently in the same property area as the Atwood property, which the council recently looked at and approved a design change for. So we have, it's currently within the low density residential general plan designation, which provides for zone changes that could occur to R112 or R115. So the current property is on R120. Any requests to go to R115? So that does match the general plan. So that does match the general plan. So the property, as shown here, does have a home on it at this location. Their proposal conceptually is to divide the property this way, so there will be two properties fronting onto 1100 North. And then just to, let's see, I don't think we got that one on here, but I'll just point out the Atwood property that was recently rezoned is this piece right here, rezoned to R115. So this property also is seeking R115 designation. And so I think it's following the tone and setting further the tone for R115 as the appropriate zone in this area. And it does meet all of the criteria set forth in the code. So this proposal was brought forward recently to the planning commission and they did unanimously recommend it.
Ken?
Do you have any concerns about?
The reason why the Atwoods was changed is because they were bringing in this road to front, in front of their road and it carved out a small piece of their property, which made, so they couldn't meet the R120 zone. Well, that road is planned to extend, according to our plans, to go something like this and tie in over to 500 East. So it, I suppose there could be other options if the property were to develop differently. That cul-de-sac could be brought down to this area. But for now, that is not the intent of the property owners. They would just like to divide their property right here. And this would not affect the land roadway.
Other questions?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Well, I guess I felt like the Atwoods had a really compelling concern. They're just a few feet shy of what they needed to be the R120. And I'm not sure I see the same compelling rationale here. There's a, there's a sense in my mind that a lot of people buy their properties knowing what the zoning is and expecting a certain density of housing. So speak to that, I guess, if you can.
Okay. Well, this area historically, if you go way back, was all either R120 or RR. But over the years, we've had a lot of zone changes come in and be approved. So you do have this R110 subdivision, which was part of the discussion of the last rezone that was approved in through this area. You've got R19 across the street here is kind of out of place in this area now. Again, according to the general plan designation, the whole area is low density residential. It's not very low density residential, it's low. Very would allow for the R120. If we were to talk about new zone changes at this time, the only zones that would be looked at without changing the general plan would be R112 or R115. So it is matching the current vision, perhaps not the initial vision of the earlier undeveloped Pleasant Grove, but in the current vision, this does match.
So 15 is approximately a third of an acre.
Well, it's approximately 30 acres.
Other questions for Ken? Okay, it is a public hearing, so we're going to open it up to the public at this time. If there are those that would like to speak to this item, please come up and state your name and address.
Advocates are here.
Would you like to say anything?
No, because somebody has questions. Here, representative.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back up here. Any further discussion?
I would like to make a motion then, if that's all right.
Please do.
I move that the city council approve the request to rezone approximately .98 acres of property located at approximately 525 East, 1100 North, from R120 to R115 and adopting the exhibits, conditions, and findings of staff. Second.
Motion by Diana, second by Sid, by voice. Diana?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item D, to consider for approval an amendment to the Commons Plat A, final plat to reflect a boundary line change located at approximately 1580 West, 100 South in the Grove Zone.
Okay, so this plat was approved, I don't know, about a year and a half ago. And we're talking about the construction of a current area. This is looking from some of the new townhomes that have been constructed on the Commons, right here looking at Eastford, Porser Mountains. We're looking at the south boundary line between the Commons Development and Smith Property. And over in the very end is Proctor, just very touching. What, what we're doing here is we, we have a need for amending the property lines on the plat because the fence line that we just showed in the other picture does not meet the existing plat line. There is a bit of a difference there. And so rather than pull up the fence and change it, the development did not feel a need to have that additional minor square feet area onto their property. It does not affect the requirements of their site plant. And so they just thought, rather than move the fence, let's just change the plat.
So they're going to do a quick clean deed and just give it to the Smiths or?
Well, yeah, by plat and by deed, it would be. And it's the Smiths and the Proctors.
Just move back. And was it just reported incorrectly by the county or how did that happen?
No, it was recorded correctly as per property lines, as recognized by the county. But the fence line did not match. And so as the property has been developed, determining that, okay, well, we need to recognize that our fence is in the wrong place and we make a move it or let's just keep moving property.
You know those overlapping lines that Dagan throws up there sometimes?
In this case, they're the stream occupied described.
Okay.
So the applicant's representative is here if you have questions for them.
Do we have any questions?
Again, I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
He's a housekeeper.
Yeah.
If there's no questions, we'll entertain a motion.
May I move that we approve an amendment to the Commons Plat A, final plat to reflect the boundary line change located at approximately 1580 West, 100 South in the Grove Zone, mixed housing and sub district.
Motion by Ben?
Sorry, I, maybe I missed it. Did you open this for a public hearing?
It's not listed as a public hearing. Is that okay?
We just had a question, so I just.
Okay.
It's a final plat, so there's no.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben, a second by Sid. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for checking. Okay, item E, to consider for approval, a six lot final plat known as Amanda Acres Plat B, being a vacation of lots one and two of Amanda Acres Plat A and lot 14 of Larson Acres Plat A, located at approximately 1245 North, 380 East in the R18 and R110 zones.
Okay, so we have some vacant property in this area that is wanting to be replatted or the owners would like to have it replatted between 300 East and, what is that?
Go to the north.
380.
380.
380. Anyway, at approximately 1220 North here. The, so you do have some split zoning on the property, basically representing the different sections of the property that we'll describe here in a minute. So R18 and R110 are the zones currently. So you do have, as you can see, a couple of homes here on the front of the property on 380 East. And you've got a large piece of ground here that has development ability. And you've got another parcel ground here that has gone to this roadway. And as you can see, the shape of that property is kind of challenging in its depth. We have been dealing with this for a number of years. It has gone forward to the board of adjustment and planning commission has looked at it. Developers, when they look at that property, they're weak, you know, there's just not ability to build the kind of house that they're normally building on these properties anymore. It's just not deep enough. Not quite sure how or why it got approved that way, but it is what it is. So, but we were fortunate in the fact that the developers of this property were willing to work with the city and with this property over here, the owners of this property, to deed over a little bit more property here to make it this parcel a little bit wider or a little deeper, shall I say, that would increase its buildable area. So we feel like this is a good proposal. So elsewhere on the property, what they're proposing is a flag lot. So this is a deeper, older lot within the city. So it does meet the general criteria of the flag lot ordinance. You've got these two lots here with existing homes with the existing, or a stem that will be brought in between them and turnarounds on either side here. So that you've got one, two, three flag lots, which is the maximum that can be accessed by a flag lot stem. So you've got a total of three existing lots now going to six. So you've got the two homes and the vacant shallow lot over here now being recreated to have three new flag lots behind existing homes and expanding the width or depth of that one. So this proposal did go forward to planning commission as a preliminary plat and received unanimous approval for the preliminary plat. And the final plat now is recommended by staff for approval.
So is this owned by all one family? Is this going to be like a?
Two families.
Two families. So are the two, are lot one and two property owners okay with what's going on?
Yes.
Behind them? It almost seems more like a cul-de-sac a little bit. I mean, it's the flag lot, but it works out to be?
It has the same functionality.
Same functionality. So they are okay with that, though?
Yes.
Any questions for Ken?
And I was reading in the, in the paperwork that this is the maximum six, five lots on one parcel?
Or three flag lots on a stem. So even though you've got five lots in through here, these two both front onto 380 East. Their axis is on.
So they're not considered the flag?
Right, so they're not flag lots there. It would be these three back here. So those are the three that would make it the maximum that you could have on the flag lot stem.
And do you have, do you have any concerns or?
I dig it. We've actually done these before, thinking back a few years. We did one with Alred's towards the west. I don't know, the three, the three lots off of a, kind of like the same Hammerhead looking cul-de-sac.
And how does, does a property already turn in the name like Amanda Acres or Larson Acres?
The developer or the family that's putting forward the proposal can put whatever name they want on it, as long as it's not already being used in the county.
I wonder how I make that happen. In your neighborhood.
Lamone.
Or Sid. I.
I'll just.
Sid Acres.
Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I made a motion to approve a six lot final plat known as Amanda Acres Plat B, being vacation of lots one and two of Amanda Acres Plat A and lot 14 of Larson Acres Plat A, located approximately 1245 North, 380 East in the R18 and R110 zones.
Motion by Sid. Second by Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item F, to consider for adoption, a resolution 2014-011, adopting the emergency operation plan to provide for the planning and coordination of emergency functions during a disaster or other emergency event and providing for an effective date.
Mayor and council, Sherry wasn't able to make it tonight, so I'll present this. Several weeks ago, she came in and presented this plan to you. And I believe each of you had an opportunity to look through it. Some made some suggestions and got them back to her. She made some changes to the plan. And so we wanted to bring it back before you today and ask that we adopt this plan.
I have one more question. So in the, in the plan, I talked about the notifications that would happen when there's an emergency and the lines of communication. And I wonder if those are listed in priority because the first was the landline. And I know we're looking at other options for notifying the community in case of emergency. So is that in priority or that just all of the resources that we have available to send out communications and should it be listed in priority? And do departments and different people know? Because it seems like what happened with the water situation, the landline communication, some people got it, some people didn't.
I think land, well, I think landline, some of the, the new mass communication systems that we're looking at, they're, in fact, all of them, their capabilities would be, there's really no priority. There's a list of how you want this message to go out. And you, it's, you, you set it up so it's not, each time you do it, you're checking things. So if, say for instance, on Boyle or we want it to go out by landline, we want it to go out by cell, we want it to send a text message, we want it to send an email, we want it to send it to Facebook, we want to send it to Twitter. You can have a multitude of ways and it's all going to go at the same time to every one of those sources.
And so speaking of that, are you kind of presenting something about the Everbridge or Parland or what we're looking at for options for verification?
We do. I have been in contact with several different companies, Everbridge and Parland being two of them, another one called Code Red, and discussing with them their, their system and preparing a recommendation for the council on which direction we should go. As of, I believe it's July, we will have nothing. City Watch is what we currently have. It, it just hasn't been successful. If you remember from Boyle, where it failed. We just recently used it just, just on our own to get our own personnel alerted to our recent case that we've been working in, that even on a smaller scale, just our department failed. As of July, we've been, that, that system's been paid for through the county and they're not going to continue that contract. So we, we have to do something if we want a mass communication system. It will no longer be available to us. Most of the other cities are, have either already contracted with someone or, or in the process as we are.
So are we kind of looking at a date that you'd be bringing that back, like maybe?
We, yeah, we just, Scott and I need to meet and get a, a date set for the amendment.
But you're saying we can't use it after, we, we can't use the other after July?
It'll be, yeah, it'll, it'll be gone.
It's already dead on the vine anyway, really.
Pretty much. I mean, it, it, it's absolutely better than nothing. It will work, but the failure rate is, is not acceptable to us.
Is that going to give us enough time, though, to put it in place by the time the other system's down? Like, do you know how long it takes to implement the actual system once it's produced?
I think we're talking a couple of weeks, but June 1st, we may want to get it before you sooner.
May 1st, and we go through the document.
Well, it won't be ready by May. No, but Scott and I need to sit down and go over some of the different points of these and just bring.
But I mean, could you bring the presentation list to the council by that date and then?
Here's, we'll, we'll promise we'll have something functional by July 1st. So whatever, as we meet with these companies, we'll ask them how long it takes. But this is something that we've probably pushed back in the priority list over the last few months. And we just need to get it pushed back up and take a look at it. We've got a lot of the research done. It's just a matter of sit down and getting a hard bid from the companies and then making a decision. So as soon as we can. We'll get it. We've got to have it.
Other discussion? Other questions?
No, thanks to Sherry. I mean, it's been a great deal of work. Since we decided to go this route and she spent a great deal of time making these happen.
And it's not over. So, and I'll make sure I kind of let her know. She's done a ton of work, you're absolutely right. She's not done. This is the, this is the basic plan, emergency operation plan. There's still a ton of work to do. The emergency support functions, the ESFs, all need to be compiled, but we need to get this basic plan adopted and in place. And then she's already got appointments with several of the department heads to start getting those ESFs in place and complete.
And then it's, oh, go ahead.
And the success of it really is twofold in my mind, is that plus the fact of having the public safety facilities to then make this document reach its full potential.
You're right. If there's not a, well, everything that this is written for is to provide for the, the care of our citizens. And if the structure of this is not intact as far as the body that needs to come together to enact this and have a place to enact this with the functions that that place required, we're going to be severely hindered.
So I know last time we talked about getting some information online to the residents. And so is this going to be made available online, the entire document or just a portion of it? So they know our, and understand our community.
We've, we've looked into, and Sherry, I know she's, she's looked into some of bridged. This, this plan is not designed for. This plan is not designed for a homeowner to open it up and say, okay, what do I do in the event of an earthquake? That is not what this plan is for. This plan is for the city, for me as the chief, to know what are my duties and functions. It's expected of my department in the event of an earthquake or whatever it may be. And for each department head to do the same and for the council to do the same and come together as a elected body and make decisions to give aid, render aid to our citizens. So there's portions of this that we could, there's portions of it that talk about operational issues that could, that probably should not be published because...
Security.
For security reasons. So that would be something if we wanted to come up with some abridged portion that could be released to do that.
We've talked about putting together a card. Sherry was mentioning a card. I think it was laminated that could be placed on a refrigerator or somewhere for...
Numbers and information.
Yeah, emergency content.
There's all sorts of stuff back, and that's a great idea. There's other programs in place that, you know, have different colored dots you can put in your window for what page you need. There's all sorts of things as we roll into this that we can start working on and getting in place. And there's already, there's no, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. There's companies out there that make abridged little booklets that are designed for a homeowner that they can turn to and say, okay, earthquake, what should I do? What should I prepare for? And then they'll customize it to our city and our contact information in it. Who do I call? What do I need? So that's very doable.
I learned a lot. I was very, and I'm so grateful that we're doing this step by step and that I got in on days one.
That you don't have to read the whole thing all at once.
Well, I stick Kerry with me in case the emergency strikes wherever I am. It's a great service. Tell Sherry thank you. Anything else for Chief Smith? Okay, if not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to adopt resolution 2014-011, adopting the emergency operation plan to provide for planning and coordination of emergency functions during a disaster or other emergency event and providing for an effective date.
Also, Ken?
We have a motion by Ben, second by Diana, by voice, Ben.
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Item G, to consider for adoption a resolution 2014-012, authorizing the mayor to sign a purchase agreement with Boyer Walker Ridge LLC to purchase 1.04 acres of real property located at approximately 300 north, 1300 east for the construction of a secondary water storage tank and providing for an effective date.
Okay, so this is property, if you're familiar, up on the bench where 1300 east turns into Dalton. The Walker family have had property on east and west of that bend there. The lower portion on the west was approved as a subdivision, Walker Ridge Plat A. As that project moved forward, staff got to thinking about the secondary system and some of our needs and we've been looking for a location for an additional water tank. This actually was our preferred alternative or used during the original design of the system. At that time, the city was unable to reach a mutually acceptable purchase agreement from the Walker family. Boyer Company, as they're developing it, we approached them and said, hey, we're still interested in this quarter. Would you be interested in selling us these three lots? They agreed to that. We had the property appraised, which supports the price, an agreement of 144,000 per lot. So you have a total of...
The price is in the, it's 432,000.
432,000, there it is. Looking for it. So $432,000 for the three lots. The tank will sit primarily on lots five and six, which are technically off of the cul-de-sac down below. Lot 15 will be used primarily for access. And there is the possibility that when we construct the tank, that we could potentially sell lot 15. We could some of the money invested to get the property and simply retain an access to the tank. So right now, there are no immediate plans to construct the tank. It was an opportunity to secure the property.
On this one, the funding comes from the secondary water? Is that right?
From the water fund, yes.
Water fund? Questions for Dagan? We reviewed this one multiple times. Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve resolution 2014-012, authorizing the mayor to sign a purchase agreement with Boyer Walker Ridge LLC to purchase 1.04 acres of real property located approximately 300 north, 1300 east for the construction of the second water storage tank and providing an effective date.
Hold on a second. Motion by Cindy, second by Ben, by voice, Diana?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item G, to consider for adoption, res, pardon, H, sorry, to consider for adoption a resolution 2014-013, authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with Metropolitan Water District of Orem to use irrigation water associated with their shares in the 2014 irrigation season and provide for an effective date.
Mayor, this is the water we talked about renting from Prova Bench or through Orem. And we're just wanting to get that set up so we can get moving where we tap on the ground this year.
What is the current water estimate up on the mountain?
It's just below 50 percent.
Still below 50 percent.
And then worse.
Questions for Lynn?
So this is authorizing the use, did we determine as a council that we were going to subsidize that cost to the residents this year?
No, that's interned as well.
But regardless whether or not we decide that, we'll always have the agreement in place that we can use that water.
Yes, we need the water. We've got to get it tied up.
When is the day the secondary water comes on?
May 1st.
May 1st.
Other questions for them? Oh, this is complimentary, Lynn. Appreciate how proactive you always are on these issues. It's great that we're on top of it. Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
013, authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with Metropolitan Water District of Orem to use irrigation water associated with their shares in the 2014 irrigation season and providing for an effective date.
Also, Ken?
Motion by Sid, second by Diana, by voice, Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Is Lippi here today?
There's no neighborhood meetings.
No neighborhood meetings, okay. Dagan, anything?
Just have four plots to sign.
If you could, each of you kind of get ready to just say something fun that you did over spring break last week. We're only at seven o'clock.
I just want to talk.
So we have two minutes to just kind of tell us a fun thing that you did last week or one work related that you want.
It's a part of the Maysa area.
Oh, cool. That's really cool.
I worked during spring break. No fun.
Was that work?
I did go down to the Utah League of Cities and Towns convention for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday and learned a lot of good things. We'll be hearing from you and helping you in the council on bringing that rest discussion out.
Oh, cool.
Scott?
I actually have some business to talk about.
Go right ahead.
Just to get the council updated on where we are with our consultant in regards to the Public Safety Building. On Monday, we met, yesterday, we met with the consultants, the steering committee, to outline certain things moving forward. But in essence, sitting down and talking about what the guiding values are for the steering committee on this, on this building. And the guiding values ended up being having public safety be my priority in our community. It's one of the guiding values we wanted to have. And the other one was to have a facility that would help, I don't know if we want to use the term revitalize downtown, but something that could be there to help gain momentum as we continue to develop as a city in regards to our downtown area. Those turned out to be our two guiding principles that came from the steering committee. We talked about a lot of things. It was about a two and a half hour process as we went through all that. And what this group is going to do, our consultants, is they are now going to meet with other citizens and other committees that we have formed to help find out what the community, what the guiding principles are for the community when it comes to our public safety. The big kickoff will be next Thursday at seven o'clock, not this Thursday coming up, Thursday next week, I believe it's the 24th, at the Pleasant Grove Junior High Auditorium. We will have the consultants there. They are gonna take some input. The input will be via written, a written card. They're gonna hand out cards. There're gonna be three questions on those cards. And as people walk in, they're gonna hand them those cards so they can write what their feelings are about public safety in Pleasant Grove, just in general, not necessarily about the facility, but in general. And then we will also roll out how we're gonna handle the next four months. So we have a bunch of neighborhood meetings scheduled and we have divided the city into kind of four quadrants so that residents will have a chance once a month to come to these meetings and to continue to give input as this process goes forward. The reason we split it into four quadrants is so that we could get some more face-to-face work done. If we did it, just one big city meeting and we had 100 people there, it'd be a little hard to kind of be able to harness what the residents have to say. So we will have a schedule for those as we finalize those, probably by the end of the week, we'll have those online. We'll have a map available for residents to click on that will say, this is the quadrant that I'm scheduled to go and here's the meeting time that I'm scheduled to go. And quite honestly, if that meeting time doesn't work for you, for your quadrant, you can probably hop in with one of the other ones. The idea being is that we don't want everybody there so that we can have a group to work with, but we also want everybody's input. We don't want anybody to feel like they're left out of the process as we continue to get feedback on these buildings. We also have the Blue Ribbon Committee, which was put in place last fall. They are going to remain intact and will have, be part of the process. We're calling them, in essence, the Technical Committee. They will be looking at probably more technical aspects of the building. We've added a few additional members onto that committee above and beyond what we had last fall. And then we are creating a Citizens Committee of a group of about probably 20 to 30 people of individuals that we have in each of the neighborhoods. So each neighborhood will be represented by one of these people. And they will have meetings separate from the neighborhood meetings in which we will be leaning on them for feedback in regards to the Public Safety Building. But really, and we're gonna have some postcards going out this week, the important meeting is next Thursday, seven o'clock. So if you see neighbors and people that were engaged and interested in this issue last year, we would love to have them reengage and join us as we seek their input and feedback in regards to these buildings. So like I said, we'll have information on the website about all this, also on all of our social media, Facebook, Twitter, and those types of things so that the public can be informed all along the way as to where we are. So that's a brief recap. Is there any questions from the council as to where we're at in that process?
So just reviewing this schedule, there's the Technical Committee. Is that still on at four o'clock on Monday?
Yes.
And there's the council meeting, work session Tuesday. There's the Citizens Committee.
They'll have their initial meeting next Wednesday.
Wednesday evening at six. And then the kickoff meeting for the general public.
And we'll introduce the Blue Ribbon Committee, the Citizens Committee, and the Steering Committee at that meeting to the general public so they know who these people are. But the future neighborhood meetings will be a chance for any resident who wants to get involved to come to those, to give input or to just be updated as to the progress that's being made. We're calling it a reset or reboot or whatever. We are, in essence, starting over. We don't have a square footage set. We don't have a price set. We really want the community to come forward and say, this is what we value. Do we value public safety? And if we do, this is what we feel comfortable with for our public safety. We talk about this internally all the time and we need to probably do a better job of communicating that this is your building as a public. It's not a city building. It's everybody's building. It's something that the city pays for, the residents pay for. And so everybody has a little bit of ownership in this building. So we want to build something that everybody, for the most part, feels good about, feels comfortable with, can support, but it also meets the function and needs in order for our departments to get the best level of service that they can.
And where are we at with the invitations for the two committees?
So they've been invited. We had a scheduling snafu with the Ribbon Committee that I'm clearing up. The Citizen Committee, we have, most of the people that we've invited have committed. We have some that our Cathy and I probably need to follow up on. But for the most probably, most of the people that we've invited have accepted and are know, they know when the meetings are.
Let me ask a question. Two weeks ago, I can't remember how long it's been, Diane and Jay and myself went up and toured the Salt Lake Police Department. And I think besides learning a great deal of information for myself, I think for me, what came out of it was that the Technical Committee or the alias Blue Ribbon Committee, I think would be monumental for them to take that tour. So if there's any way in the scheduling of events and things that are happening for this, for that committee to go and spend that, I think we were just there a couple of hours, but it was mind-boggling to understand the, what needs to go into a police and public safety building. So I would really recommend in our scheduling of all these things that that committee has that opportunity to go up there.
We'll do that. We'll talk to them when we meet with them Monday. We'll bring that up. That's a good idea.
Did you do anything fun over spring break?
I attended the Utah City Managers Conference and Utah League of Cities and Towns in St. George, so my wife and kids had a lot of fun, yes.
And you did golf?
I did. I got out a couple of times, so. I had a little fun. Little warm down there, but that's okay. Better than 40 degrees. It was a good time.
Scott?
Sherry?
So a little business, too. Just wanted to let you all know, we do have a bunch of things going on at the library this week. We have a book sale starting on Thursday. It's going to run all the way through the next week. A lot of books. We still have a lot of, we have a lot of children's books and these are different books from the last book sale if you came before. So spread the word. We'll have a lot of children's books, a lot of adult nonfiction, actually a lot of everything. We've just...
And what's the price for each of those?
50 cents for paperback, a dollar for hardbacks. And then as the time progresses, we start selling by the bag.
So, so Sherry, people ask why, why we're cutting and entering that inventory? What's the reasoning?
Why we're removing those books? That is, it's surprising that people check out a lot more books if they can see them. So that's a big part of it, is just making the books more accessible. Yes, and we have a lot of damaged books. And that's really not the image I want our library to have, is a bunch of junky books. So, yeah, it's really to make the books more accessible and more presentable.
So the unofficial term that you, the librarians use that I learned recently?
Is weeding.
Weeding.
Weeding, okay.
Yes, weeding books. And it really is, it's statistically proven, the checkouts go up a lot when you take books out of the library.
And is that in the basement of the library or just in the front entrance?
It's gonna be in the basement.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they entered, they can go through, they can enter in checkout top or we have checkout down there or...
The first three days, so Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we'll have people there, volunteers, taking money. The following week, you'll go upstairs to pay.
Okay, awesome.
Then the PG players are putting on The Foreigner starting this weekend. We also have, and if you haven't seen The Foreigner, it's a funny show. And then we also... And then we also have the Center Stage, thank you, doing their Suzuko over at the Covey Center. And then we also have Carol Lynch-Williams, who is a very popular, respected local author coming and doing the presentation on Thursday, so a lot of things going on.
Is that for the professional writer series?
And what did I do over spring break?
Yeah.
I worked and then went home and painted my cabinets.
Well, that's fun. Yeah. Do a little spring, spring spruce up?
Yes, that's all right.
Days prior to everybody else, which we were fortunate to catch the cold weather, so I didn't feel any warmer down there than I was up here, which was a great disappointment, but was, had a climbing seminar in Springdale, which was very interesting and informative, and took one of the sessions on a bike ride into the park, so that was, it was cold, but fun. So that's what I did, right there, otherwise I don't have anything. Okay, David?
Two Chamber event reminders, tomorrow night is our monthly Business After Hours Networking Event, will be held with the Lehigh and American Fork area chambers as well. It will be held at Garen Automotive in Lehigh, on Main Street there. They're going to do a brisket barbecue, our newest Chamber member, Kona Ice, shaved ice truck, and the stand is going to be there as well, so it's going to be a really great event, good food, and then just creative action with business interests as well. That's tomorrow night, anybody's invited, it's a Hell After Hours, so it's not by on the way, it only starts at six o'clock. And then next Tuesday, we're holding our second informational session, Set Your Business On Fire, and that will be Tuesday from eleven forty-five to one. Anybody who's interested in learning more about what the Chamber does, and how we support local business, and shopping local, and those kinds of things, you're invited to attend.
The other day, I was driving down Center Street, and there was a gourmet grilled cheese truck on the left-hand side of the street, the south side. You want to tell us what's going on?
Yeah, so I just toured that, just toured that building yesterday, to see the progress of the renovations, the Old Sammy's location, looks nothing like the Old Sammy's location. It is, it is a gorgeous building inside, even the outside with the nice steam cleaned or water cleaned, power washed, red brick, really pops, it's really nice. Cravings Cupcakes, twin sister, Angie, is bringing her gourmet sandwich shop, and hopefully we'll be in there within the next, probably a week and a half or so.
Is this the one from American Fork?
Yep, moving from American Fork, Main Street there by their city office, is coming over here, and yeah, they're ready to do a ribbon kind of thing.
The building looks incredible.
Yes, it's beautiful, right.
Yeah, just even from the outside, I mean, those...
Copy in the window.
If you've gone inside, they've got these gorgeous barrel ceilings, the wood inside is just fantastic, and it may be the nicest inside interior restaurant that we have in the city, it's very beautiful.
So David, are we able to follow up with the restaurant just west of their, not restaurant, sorry, building, because it's vacant, it's kind of got broken glass, it doesn't look good next to it?
We've turned that over to Carl on the code side.
Mike, or Smith, does he know where we're at with that? Or probably not?
You know, I have talked to Carl about it the last, probably a couple weeks.
Because it'd be nice to have that, I mean, cleaned up before they open. I mean, even if it's just black drapes are thrown in front of the windows or something, so I don't know if we can, because I know she's planning opening in the next couple weeks.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to have that.
So we're, he was going to go ask him to either put some drapes up or clean it up in a minute, because part of it might be legally, what we can do as a city to say he...
Well, yeah, and I'm talking like we literally, us go clean it up, but sort of this broken window and a lot of boxes, and it just, it looks junky.
Oh, yeah.
I know long-term that that, being talked about by Test Value...
But is Test out on that right now?
No.
Okay. But we do know, knows that he's been in contact, are, we're going to call up on that?
Yeah, we just need to ask Carl what he's at.
So whether or not Testout does end up working at that, like they've done some other properties, I don't know, but they'll talk about it.
Okay. And then what did you do fun over spring break?
I went to the St. George City Manager Conference as well.
Oh, cool, okay, great.
And then came back and was able to spend some time with my sister from Calhoun.
Oh.
Can you also just update about those Chamber events by email, like you did?
Yeah, I'll send you.
Yeah, so just reminders, because I'll make it to wherever I can.
John?
We signed our first contract with the Northfield Fifth Ward for our Adopt a Park Program this year, so they're taking on the Discovery Menela Park, and there's some big expectations going to be, so it'll be fun to see how it works, so.
So how, how did that come about? Like, did they volunteer, or did you, like, how did we get them involved? Because it'd be neat if we could do kind of an online volunteer signup for other words or states, or just people in general that are interested.
That's soon to be coming out, that's the volunteer website we've been working on for a while. So there is the Adopt a Park and the Adopt a Trail.
And is that online right now on our website?
It's not, it's really close to going online.
You could go take a look at the kind of the beta site, volunteer dot fieldgrove dot org, not quite ready to roll out, but you could take a look and see kind of the signup process, how it looks.
Is there a date we're kind of looking at for that to be up and running?
Yes. We want to get that up as soon as we can. We've been working on that for a while.
So like meat first, meat first dish, or?
Safety plan.
Yeah, why not? Okay, awesome, so we'll be watching for that.
Yeah, we, we're trying to roll that out here right away before summer, for the hiding of the volunteers.
That program will also have all the equal projects, any volunteer work.
Does someone's looking at you? Dion's personal assistant on here.
Yep, getting us tickets to yours.
So what did you do over fun, over spring break?
I worked.
You did something else fun?
Not really.
Okay.
Had Sunday off, so I looked good.
Well, thanks, Dion.
Len?
Would you all remember City Clean Up's coming up in a couple weeks, May third to the tenth? And we'll be, remember this year, we're down to the pipe plant.
Oh, really? It's not the rodeo grounds?
Nope. Let's keep that clean, as nice as it looks, let's try to hang on to that.
So May third to what?
Pipe plant, and that's been advertised. And we're fast trying to turn the secondary water on, trouble to, to work to get it down. Stay right after that, and thank you for the approval of the water, so we can save the future season. And I had fun every day.
Do you?
Because I love my job.
Good answer, Len.
If you enjoy what you do, you never work a day in your life.
That's right.
Thank you, Len.
Okay, Mark, can you lead up? The last week we spent, we took any of our fire guys back, four wives, back to Indianapolis to the FDIC Conference, Fire Department International Conference. And I calculated, we did probably close to two hundred and fifty training hours, with a bunch of different concepts that the guys have even this week started to implement, some of the ideas that they learned, just the equipment, wands, and then just moving things around to fit what we currently have. So it was a very beneficial conference, guys had a great time, brought back a ton of information, filter out throughout the department, probably even low count. And then I just got a text message, the doctor just went into the room, because Riley's delivering a baby today, she's gone to the lab, so it should be fun to go.
Should we bring my luggage back?
We did.
Okay.
Our luggage is in Africa, we had to get it from somewhere.
All right, just checking. Sid, you asked them?
Yeah, so you did a race over spring break, is that right? I think that's on Facebook.
Yeah, back in Indianapolis, I, Saturday morning after the conference, I took a couple hours, went over to Carmel, which is just ten miles outside of Indianapolis.
So you took a couple hours of triathlon marathon?
And then jammed back in the last couple hours of training. So Scott golfs and I run, so that's why.
That's, congrats.
Actually, we should wear a body type, so.
Yeah.
And that was like a full, a full twenty-six point, that's good for you, that's awesome.
Anything else, Mark?
No.
Mike, do you want to take a minute and maybe share with the council and the staff what you guys have been through this past weekend?
I can share, I can share a little. I think most of you have probably seen all of the press release and information, so it's just been a, it's been a hard couple days for the department. I apologize for being a little late, we were having a, having a critical incident to debrief, and there is obviously some employee issues that I, I'm glad we had the debrief, there's some people that are struggling with what they, or even what they have struggled with. There's a lot still to do on the case, we're still, I've got guys basically working around the clock, they're, they're still out, they'll be out late tonight doing some, some investigation on the case, but, so, with that, you know, we, even on the media side, we've had non-stop, it's just, we have, I have assigned Captain Roberts, he's our Public Information Officer, and it was just too much for one person, so between he and I and Lieutenant Smith, we just started, you know, just breaking up the list and getting back to people. I mean, we've got media from around the world, Japan, Germany, Australia, Europe, just from everywhere that wants information on it, and so I think we're doing an all right job, I think we're doing a great job keeping the media taken care of. Some of the things that we considered was just holding a large press conference, but you know, my decision was no, because we would, in my opinion, we would get a handful of local affiliates, and then we would still have a list and let along of people, we just, you know, they're not going to send somebody out and they're sure they don't want information from all of these sources throughout the nation of the world. So the case is, it's moving along, and it's coming together well. I don't know how much information you want, but you...
So you can, you can share at this point?
I can give you the basic public statement, so on Saturday morning, around ten o'clock, the citizen called, said that they've been in our garage and found what they believed to be an infant, I received a turn on our officers worn up, and confirmed that that's what it was, and they made the immediate decision to write a search warrant on residents, which was absolutely the right thing to do. And in the course of that search warrant, they discovered six mother infants, all packaged in similar ways. From there, they, they conducted another search in West Valley for each child. We are still investigating every week that we have, and every afternoon we can, to make sure that we're not missing anything. Like I said, this will, there's still so much work to do, but you guys are doing such a tremendous job, so, so impressed with what they did, just like we were talking in our debrief. I honestly don't know of another department, and I've worked with a lot of departments, know a lot of the guys around, I don't know of another department who have line-level patrol officers who are as skilled as ours to be able to, for us to say, "Hey, I need you to go to West Valley, need you to secure a scene, and I need you to write a search warrant." That's just not heard of for a patrolman to do that, but our guys have that talent and that skill, and, you know, so we were able to de-utilize our line-level patrol and positions that only very seasoned detectives and a lot of agencies would have the capability of doing. So, you know, it's, they've done a great job, you know, I, I was going to share with you, I've done a lot of emails, you know, we get a lot of emails from media sources, and just, you know, people saying this or that, wanting to object what they believe, but I've got, in all, in all of that, I got one email that, I'll leave out anything that identifies in federal, he wants to be identified, that he just says, "I just want to send you a letter of support for you and the staff and the officers that are, that are conducting an investigation with the homicide case of the babies. I can't even imagine what you or the staff and officers and detectives are going through. If I had to see that, I probably would lose it, and I am a very strong-willed person. Your personnel are going to need help, right on that, and support you with this horrendous tragedy. I want you to know, sir, that I support you, I support your staff and officers and detectives of the Pleasant Grove Police Department. Please post this memo and let everybody know that there are people out there that truly care, not only about you, but the staff and the officers of your department. I want to send a huge thank you and support for all you and women and men who are on for you." So, you have any questions? I mean, if you have questions, I'll answer what I can, but...
Mike, we just want to thank you for your leadership and the skill that you have instilled in the department, for them to be able to execute this warrant, and also for the, your ability to emotionally contain themselves during this tragedy. It was, it was heart-wrenching on Sunday to visit with them, they looked really good. Yesterday, they looked okay, today you can tell that there were just a few personal feelings starting to come to the surface, and our hearts are with you and the team. We don't understand what you're going through, but we appreciate you going through it for us. Thank you.
And I didn't know.
Also skip your mic on.
Kathy?
What did you do for last week? Stripped wallpaper, my kitchen paint.
Me? It's very hard to follow the police and fire guys, I know that, I had all my fun before I found out, can I just say that, so that I can tell about how much fun I had? I also went down to St. George to the League of Cities and Towns, and it's just a, it's just very wonderful to, just to get a glimpse as to what's been happening in my city for years and years and years, and I just had no idea. I tried to explain to someone, you just kind of open up this door that's been running parallel to you for your whole life, and you just take it, take a, you know, a drink out of that river that's been running, and I'm just very grateful for what I've learned, and the time that I was able to spend down there. I did have fun, I did do some golfing also, horribly, I hit a house.
Just one house?
Just one house, thank you, Scott. But in St. George, they build houses on a fairway, I don't know.
They weren't on the fairway.
They were on first fairway.
David?
I was in the fairway, there was no house.
I was clearly not in the fairway, but they were close to the fairway. Anyway, I also, I, there's a shooting range, so I did a little research and development out by Sand Hollow Reservoir, and it was a lot of fun, but you have to drive twenty minutes to get to it, so, it's not, the noise is not, anyway, had fun there. I also went to Sand Hollow, and has anybody paddleboard, where you, you stand on top of a, kind of a surfboard? I did that for four hours, I did not realize that I was going to be as sore as I was, it's a very good workout.
To improve and address a few things, and so I spent my spring break campaigning, and some people in the room appreciate what that's all about, it's not the most fun way to spend spring break probably, but, but it was a good, good experience and great to visit people all over the county, and we had our convention on Saturday, and we did very well for a challenger against a well-established company, and we had a lot more resources to spend, so we, it should be fantastic, I've got extra tickets if anybody would like to be there, let me know, it's something I'm looking forward to. But basically, just life and work and not a lot of spare time the last few weeks, but I should have a lot more going forward, but not as much as I envisioned I might, so.
Sid?
Well, first thing, we went to Mexico, which was fun with my family and sister, some kids, my parents, so I try and do a kind of big trip every few years, and vacations are getting more important as our kids get older and our one son could leave a mission a few years. Those vacations are really important, so it was really fun to do that. And then I just, you know, again, to the police, just I have great respect for our public safety employees, you know, especially including the un-uniformed, you know, Becca, who handles the advocates and, you know, dispatch, and maybe the people that you don't see very on the streets, so.
Yeah, we don't want to hear about that.
So, I thought we had done that note. So, no, we had a working play week for me, so it was good. And I want to echo Mike and Sid's comments to our police. It does, it's a feeling of knowing that we have very competent, but yet caring people that work for this police department.